Okay, I'll call this regular meeting of the Curville City Council to order Tuesday, November the fourteenth at six o'clock PM. Thank you all for coming and please make sure your cellphones are in the off position. We will begin with the invocation offered by Councilmember Mary Ellen Summerlin, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Moser. You may stand if you wish.
Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight, as always, full of thanksgiving. Thanksgiving for the comforts of our lives, for the love that surrounds us, for the joy of every day. We pray your blessings tonight on those who are hurting, those in Sutherland Springs, those in Iran, those in Puerto Rico. And for ourselves, we pray that you will be with us, that you will fill us with your grace for the work before us, so that we may follow the command of the prophet Micah, who said, "Do justice, love kindness, walk humbly with your God." In Jesus' name, amen.
Charm me if you will in a pledge of flag.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much for starting us off tonight. Item number one is announcements of community interest. Mr. Cunias.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Welcome to everybody here tonight. All right, we have several items of note this week, a couple of them on Saturday, so we want to pay close attention to them. First of all, the next Curville 2050 Comprehensive Plan Meeting is this Saturday at Tucker Hall, St. Peter's Fiscal Church. And it starts at nine thirty, it runs to two thirty. We invite everybody to come out. If you want to have a part in planning for the future of Curville, this is a great place to be on Saturday. You can make your opinions and your feelings known. We would like you to RSVP because we have, we're going to have breakfast snacks and box lunches. And we're also going to have, let's see if I can make this go forward, we're also going to have some T-shirts that we'll be handing out, so. So come on out and check this out. You can RSVP on our website if you want, if you don't want to do that, if you want me to RSVP for you, you can bring me your name, your email, and your phone number, just write it down on a piece of paper and hand it to me after the meeting and I'll sign you up in the morning. All right, now to a really fun item. Saturday night is the annual Holiday Light Parade, which officially kicks off the area holiday season. Begins at six PM, will wind its way through downtown Curville before ending up at the county courthouse for the lighting of the Christmas tree and the arrival of Santa Claus. Now, Ashley Boyle just told me that we have ninety-one entries this year, up from seventy last year.
Wow.
So some brief cushions, because you may be there a while. It's going to be a fun time. The grand marshal this year is Steve Schwartz, I think a lot of people know him. So we're looking forward to that. This is a fun, well-attended event each year. Don't forget that there's plenty of free parking across the street in the parking garage. And want to start getting everybody ready for the Household Hazardous Waste Collection. This is a big event every year. It's December ninth at the Hill Country Youth Events Center. And it's a great opportunity for you to clear out your old paint, tires, electronic products, and other hazardous waste, and make sure that it's properly disposed of. You can drive out there, the city will take care of that for you. It runs from eight AM to one PM, and there will be more information as we get closer to the date, both on our website and on our Facebook page. And don't forget, kind of in line with this, tomorrow, Wednesday, November fifteenth is America Recycles Day, today when communities all across the United States come together for the only nationally recognized day dedicated, and the city of Curville saw the Waste Division challenges everyone here to take the recycling initiative and find ways to improve recycling. So we've got some big events coming up, and I hope you all will keep them all in mind. And actually, I hope we'll see you all Saturday. Thank you very much.
Uh huh. Anybody else from council have any announcements? I do have one request from the city council and mayor and city administrator of Ingram. They're going to have their Christmas parade and tree lighting December the second at six PM. It's a $4,000 entry fee, they need to raise some money in Ingram. No, just kidding. There is some entry forms that'll look like this on the front counter, and he encouraged everyone who may be interested, maybe as big as the one here, huh? And so their deadline is November the thirtieth, and if anybody's interested, I'm sure they'd appreciate it, you can pick it up on the counter in the front or get in touch with them there. Also, thank you so much, Walt Koenig, for visiting us this morning. We had a number of members from the staff, and I spoke to the Leadership Kirk County Group, and it's an excellent way for people to get to know their community and how the community works. And this is just one of their many stops during the year, and we enjoyed having you today.
Thanks so much, Mayor White, for your staff's attention and the great presentation. We really appreciate it.
We're glad to have you. Anything else?
I have one self-serving one, I have a nephew with a birthday today, David Barudy, just thought I'd throw it in there.
All right, birthday, David. Must we sing? Okay. Item number two is the Visitors and Citizens Form. Any citizen with business not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the city council. Prior to speaking, each speaker must fill out a speaker request form and give it to the city secretary. Please note the citizen participation disclaimers on either side of the council chamber. City council may not discuss or take any action on an item, but may place the issue on a future agenda. The number of speakers limited to the first ten, and each speaker is limited to four minutes. I have only one form this evening, and it would be Maggie Baker.
Good evening, Mayor White and city council members. I just want to say thank you to Mayor White, the Curville Police Department, Chief Knight, and our City Streets Department, Joel Miners. All of them were wonderful this year in helping us with our Kirk County Veterans Day Parade. Without their help again this year, it wouldn't have gone off as well as it did. So I just want to say thank you to all of them.
We enjoyed it. Thank you so much for doing it, Maggie. Anybody else? If not, we will move on to item three A, which is a proclamation proclaiming November thirteenth through the nineteenth, twenty seventeen, as National Apprenticeship Week. I want to read a little something first to you. This is on behalf of the Curville Public Utility Board, and I would ask these members to step forward when I call your name. Tammy Riley, and just stand here if you would. Tammy is the Manager of Human Resources, Safety and Training, Administrator of the K-Pub Lineman Apprenticeship Program. Larry Lee. Larry is General Foreman of Operations for K-Pub. Kenneth Becker, Crew Leader and Lineman. And Richie Clemmons, who is first-year apprentice lineman. At the time of the implementation, the leaders of this program of K-Pub believe strongly in the value of the lineman apprenticeship program, and they sent all current linemen through the program. Mr. Lee and Mr. Becker were part of that initial group, both were original L-CRA employees and continued employment when K-Pub began. They each have over thirty years' experience in the electric utility industry, and most of that has been serving the Curville community. Mr. Clemmons is K-Pub's newest apprentice, having entered the program in March of twenty seventeen. Richie came to K-Pub in twenty sixteen as a lineman helper. After one year of employment, applied and was accepted into the apprenticeship program. Richie is expected to complete his apprenticeship in March of twenty twenty-one. And I'm going to join you to read a proclamation. Okay, whereas the city of Curville recognizes a successful economic future and demands flexible workforce training and credentials beyond secondary education that can be modified to accommodate changing economic and business needs, and whereas the city of Curville and surrounding communities have benefited from the apprenticeship program at Curville Public Utility Board, this program has been in place over a decade and provided training for twenty-seven apprentice line workers. The graduates of this program play a key role in K-Pub's mission of providing safe, reliable, and cost-effective electric service to our community. And whereas registered apprenticeship programs lead to a highly skilled workforce for industries and employers by providing workers with versatility and recognized credentials, both statewide and nationally, which enhances economic strength and leads to a vital economic environment. And whereas individuals in registered apprenticeship programs such as those at K-Pub can learn while they, can earn while they learn, and receive educational opportunities through on-the-job training and related bookwork instruction. And whereas, the goal of observance is to highlight the collective effort among states, industries, employers, educators, community-based organizations, as well as local, state, and federal government, to ensure continued leadership in developing an innovative and highly skilled workforce through apprenticeship. Now, therefore, after reading all of these things, I, Bonnie White, Mayor of the city of Curville, do proclaim the week of November thirteenth through the nineteenth, twenty seventeen, as National Apprenticeship Week, and I ask Mike Whitler to join us, the general manager, and he didn't, but I think now we can coerce him into it. Let's give all of these who have earned this award a big hand. And I'll see all of them at K-Pub meeting in the morning. Okay, item number four, A and B, is the Consent Agenda. Ms. Craig has asked that we remove the minutes of the meeting from September the twenty-sixth. There's been some comment from council members. So I would ask for approval of four A, the meeting of October the tenth minutes, and four B as it stands. Do I have a motion to approve? Sure. I'll move approval. We have a motion, second?
Second.
Have motion, second, all in favor? Please raise your hand. Motion carries five to zero. Item number five A is ordinance number two-
Hold on, because you just actually made a motion to approve just the minutes, but we had four B on there.
Four B is the non-exclusive license agreement.
Right.
I think she just mentioned it as four B.
Yes, I didn't read it, but because it's a consent agenda item.
Okay.
Did you wish to do that?
Yeah, but I can ask the questions another time.
Okay.
It's not that important.
Are we going to just come back to the minutes of September twenty-sixth?
Yes, she'll bring them back next meeting. Is that right, Ms. Craig? Okay. Okay, item number five A is ordinance number two oh one seven dash two one, annexing an approximate seven point nine five acre tract of land into the city of Curville. Said property generally located south of and adjacent to State Highway twenty-seven East and west of Calvin Ranch Road East. Said property being out of the F. Rodriguez Survey number seventy-two, abstract number two eighty, being located adjacent to the corporate limits of the city of Curville, Texas, more commonly known as fifty-two sixty-three Highway twenty-seven East. Further describing the property to be annexed, adopting a service plan for the property annexed, and establishing the zoning for the property annexed. Ms. Council? I'm sorry, please do. Now, Ms. Council.
Thank you, good evening. Just very briefly to show you where we are in the process, we have had the two required public hearings on this annexation, and the Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval. Just to remind you of where we are, this is the second portion of the Fox Tank property. We do have an agreement and a petition per the agreement to request annexation into the city limits. Just a map of the area. And as I mentioned, the Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of both the annexation and the zoning application. That's all I have.
We have had the two required public hearings, as she mentioned, and we also had questions and answers during that time. Does anybody else, for any reason, have any questions or comments for Ms. Council from the audience? Okay. If not, I would entertain a motion to approve ordinance number two oh one seven dash two one on first reading.
So moved.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Yeah, second.
Motion and second, all in favor? Please raise your hand. Motion carries four zero, and we'll bring Mr. Vocal back. I remembered this time. Okay, item number five B is ordinance number two oh one seven dash two-two, authorizing the issuance of up to $20 million in principal amount of City of Curville, Texas, general obligation refunding bonds, series two oh one seven, approving and authorizing the execution of an escrow agreement, a paying agent registrar agreement, a purchase contract, and other instruments and procedures related thereto, delegating authority to certain city officials to select outstanding obligations to be refunded, and approve all final terms of the bonds, approving an official statement, and calling certain obligations for redemption. Mr. McDaniel, were you going to present?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'll kick things off here and then introduce our financial advisor and bond counsel. So the staff had been working with our financial advisor for some time now, looking at opportunities to refund or refinance existing debt. This would not be any new debt, it would just be looking at opportunities to get better rates essentially on our existing debt. So we have one issue that's matured and a couple more that we would look at for advanced refunding. We had planned to bring this to you in January, but with the Tax Cuts and Jobs Act that's before Congress now, it may eliminate the opportunity to do advanced refundings, and so this opportunity would be lost if we did not take action sooner. So I'll let Ann Entrickin, who's our chief financial advisor with Hilltop Securities, come forward and explain this issue and why we're here today. So, Ann?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, and members of the council. As Mr. McDaniel said, my name is Ann Berger Entrickin, and I am with Hilltop Securities. Before I begin this evening, I'd like to take just a moment and introduce two people, my colleague Kobe Echols, and the bond counsel, Tom Spurgeon, who is with McCall Perkerson Horton. This summary, just to highlight what we're going to be discussing this evening, in our capacity as the city's financial advisor, we routinely look at outstanding debt obligations to make a determination if there are opportunities for debt service savings. And so what we're going to do is talk about some of the efforts that we have done along that, and also, as Mr. McDaniel said, we're going to talk a little bit about the Tax Cuts and Job Act tax plan, and how that's impacted our proposed plan of finance to some degree. So, as Mr. McDaniel said, we have been talking with staff about various series of bonds to consider for refinancing for debt service savings. And in our last meeting, we had talked about tentatively bringing this to city council for review in January. Subsequent to that meeting, we saw on the House side, basically, they made public the draft of the Tax Cut and Job Act, and one of the provisions of that said that they were going to exclude the ability to effectuate advanced refunding transactions. And what is interesting is subsequent to that happening, the Senate bill has been released, and it also has similar language. And so basically, what that means with an effective date of December thirty-first of twenty seventeen, that if you do not do an advanced refunding, you are going to be subject to potentially changes in the enactment of the law going forward. What is interesting is that the law does not have to pass by that time, just because of the fact that it has the effective date, even if it were to be passed in March or June or July, because of the effective date that's in the existing draft, then you would be subject to implications going forward. While none of us can predict what's going to happen to the current drafted language, if it will be, if it will be passed or when it will be passed, we do believe that there are savings for your consideration that we wanted to highlight and have potentially the opportunity to move forward with an advanced refunding part of this. So if we can just quickly highlight the refunding candidates, you have series general obligation bonds from two thousand and seven, which are utility system, as well as tax-supported. You also have certificates of obligation from two thousand and seven. When we look at your two thousand and nine bonds, there were tax-supported component to that, as well as utility system components. We have bonds in two thousand and ten and bonds in two thousand and eleven. And just so you know, we looked at all of the debt, but we are highlighting these in particular because each of these had debt service savings for consideration. One of the things that we do when we look at refinancing opportunities, we don't just look at the savings within that one transaction. We step back and we look at the city's overall debt profile to make a determination as to if there is a way that we can structure the debt that not only will accomplish savings, but will help to optimize your debt structure going forward. So right now, on this slide, we just show what your existing utility system debt looks like, and on this particular slide, we look at what your existing tax-supported debt is. And what I'd like to ask you to do, we did include, in case the council wants to get into the detail of the numbers, on slides twelve through eighteen, we show each of the refunding statistics for every one of these bond issues. But what I'd like to do, at least for now, is to ask you to please turn to slide twenty, where we have a summary that we would like to highlight. So, on page twenty, what we have done is, this is the same chart I showed you just a moment ago, but in the gold-colored line, we show what the debt service would look like based on the assumptions when we put this information together. And you can see that the goal of where we're structuring the transaction is to help to optimize and levelize the existing debt service of the city. We have done the same thing on the tax-supported bonds, and you can see where in there we are looking to try to optimize the existing debt service. And so finally, looking at the summary information on slide twenty-two, as projected, the refunding par amount is just under seventeen million, refunding slightly over eighteen point six million in outstanding debt. Our projected gross savings are just under nine hundred and forty thousand dollars, with net present value savings slightly over one million dollars. We're looking at a net present value benefit projected of five point four three percent, and with a true interest cost projected to be two point four. One of the items that we wanted to drill down into a little bit relative to your agenda item for consideration is what we call a parameter bond sale. And in essence, this is pursuant to section twelve oh seven, and most of our cities who are undertaking refinancings utilize this type of a structure. And what it allows to be done is that there is a delegation authority that will allow, with your approval of the ordinance, that prior to the actual sell of the bonds, that you get a delegation of approval to move forward by the mayor and/or city manager and/or director of finance. And what this ordinance does is it really sets out the parameters under which each of the conditions that have to be met in order for this to move forward. So what we look at is, we look at, well, what is the maximum interest rate? What is the minimum savings threshold? What is the aggregate principal amount? And what is the final maturity date? And this is not an unlimited delegation authority, it is in place for a period of six months, which, as we kind of step back and think about that, we really do not have a full six months to get this effectuated, just because of what we have going on with the potential elimination of advanced refundings. But we went ahead and put in the standard, just in case, to give the most flexibility. Now, each of these has to be met in order for the approval to be done. However, we can also know that even though these are the minimum thresholds, we are going to target that the actual numbers will be better than what the minimum thresholds are. The reason that communities like to consider doing parameter sales is because it allows this to go in a day-to-day mode. We have seen volatility in our market, and actually, we've seen some volatility that's positive to issuers. Once, when we look at the Bond Buyers Index of twenty municipal bonds, it's a weekly economic indicator that comes out, and this week, the number was eighteen basis points less than the number last week, and we believe that that's because of the market's reaction to the proposed tax plan. Now, we can't say that that's going to be consistent or not, but given the ability to have flexibility and to move as we can to try to capture the markets at an optimal time, is one of the reasons that we look for parameter sale and delegation authorities. So based on what we're identifying now, we have the following for your consideration: a maximum interest rate of three and a half percent, minimum savings threshold of three point five percent of the refunded bonds, a not-to-exceed principal amount of twenty million dollars, and the final maturity date of August fifteenth, twenty thirty. And as we noted before, the delegation authority would be to the mayor and/or city manager and/or director of finance. The proposed timing that we have for your consideration is this meeting this evening on November fourteenth. We have already started working on a preliminary official statement, which is the disclosure document that goes to the market, and what we use with the rating agencies and investors use as well. We would anticipate having a rating by Friday, December first, and target pricing on Tuesday, December fifth, and with all of the approval certificates that would happen on the fifth or the sixth. You have a regular meeting on December twelfth. We would expect to be back that evening to provide the city council a summary of the results of the bond sale. And then closing, December twentieth, in advance of the December thirty-first date that we noted. Now, one thing you may note in here, and I'm going to touch on it briefly, but certainly will defer to Tom Spurgeon as bond counsel to go into it more, you will see and notice that there is one reading of this ordinance. Well, and the reason that that is the case, if we look at section twelve oh one point oh two eight of the Texas Government Code, it basically allows for ordinances related to the issuance of bonds to be effective with one reading. And your charter requires it there to be two readings. However, what is, what we have found is that state laws supersedes the city charter, and it's not just as it relates to Curville, this applies to all other Texas cities which have similar charter language. Just to help provide some history, we have utilized the one ordinance reading for bond sales for the city for a number of years, so this is consistent with the precedents that has been set before. And just to be clear, in the ordinance, there is specific language that cites the section of the code, and that it will become effective with the first reading. We want to make sure that we are very transparent in that. So just in summary, this is perhaps a little bit more compressed timing than we have done before with the city of Curville, but we really believe that the tax plan has given us impetus to move forward so that we can try to capture these savings in advance of it going to put into effect potentially, or at least the effective date. We believe, given the current interest rate environment, that the city will be able to achieve significant debt service savings, and we are, like I said, working to make sure that we structure the proposed refunding to optimize the existing city's debt service. And finally, we appreciate certainly having the opportunity to work with the city of Curville and to be a part of your team. And with that, I am happy to answer any questions you may have, and can also defer to Tom Spurgeon too, to answer questions specific to the ordinance and the one reading in particular.
All right. Thank you very much, Ann. Any questions by council?
I have one, basically, worst-case scenario, you know, on these parameters that we have, what is the savings that we would get long-term? And then what, what fees, so what net savings are we really getting?
Yes, sir. So, the savings that we show here are net of all cost of issuance, that has already been taken into effect. We think that that's important, and I will tell you a couple of things. We have been conservative in our cost of issuance assumptions, and I will tell you, we have also been conservative in our savings assumptions. We used market rates plus twenty-five basis points. It would be our hope and our goal that we would be able to come back with numbers in excess of what we have shown you, but as I said, we're in a very dynamic market right now with the tax plan and a lot of other things that are going on, and so we wanted to be conservative. And so just real quickly, let me do that calculation. So, in that particular case, if we went down to the three and a half, you would be close to about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars in net present value savings.
So what's the downside to even doing it? Like, why wouldn't everybody do this? Is there anything you could tell me that would be a negative?
So, so the only consideration is, do you potentially not do an advanced refunding at this time, and you wait until the bonds are currently callable and do a refunding at that point in time? However, we used to, but we used to be able to say, it's not a binary decision, you don't have to decide today to do an advanced refunding or wait and do a current refunding, you can do it any day in between. Well, that's no longer going to be an option. So if you do not effectuate the transaction now, you have to wait until the bonds are currently callable. None of us has the ability to predict what interest rates are going to be. It is interesting, while we have talked about and have heard about for a number of years that, oh, the Fed's going to raise rates multiple times this year, well, we have been talking internally- talking internally that they really think that the Fed is going to potentially raise interest rates four times this year. Again, they've been saying that for a number of years, and that's not really happened yet, but we just don't know. There are signs that the economy is looking stronger, and just, we're hearing that there's more of a potential. So I think it's a little bit of, do you take the bird in the hand? And if these are savings levels that are deemed appropriate by the city, then we move forward, or your alternative is to wait over time and take what the interest rates may be at the time the bonds become callable.
Okay, so without the legislative action, we might have been able to wait a little longer, to play it out a little longer?
Yes, sir, exactly.
Mayor, if I could add to that, I think the other motivation here is that we want to develop a financing plan to bring to you all to deal with TTHM and Legion Lift Station in particular. And so if we, if we know what our savings are now, plus we're relooking at our K-Pub loan, we'll be talking to their board tomorrow morning, to put that in place so that we can bring you a financing plan for those two very large projects. So that's another motivation, to try to get this set, so that we can then build on that and bring you something that's more certain.
And my only other question, because I had these questions when I had this emailed earlier in the week, but would be, would it affect our bond rating at all? What does it do to that?
Actually, we would have no expectations there would be a change in the bond rating, and the rating agencies see this as an opportunity that you are achieving debt service savings by doing this transaction, so it only makes a stronger argument for the rating that you have.
At what point do we, do we decide between the and ors? Is this, are these parameters written into the ordinance? So, okay, but the delegation authority is the mayor and/or the city manager and/or the director of finance. Does the council decide that those are all ands, or how does that work?
The council can. We can certainly do that typically. We like to leave as flexible as possible, in case someone is not available at the time, because it's, decisions have to be made on the day of price.
I see. So the implication of that is one of the three, at least?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. We have had times with pricings that a window opened up in the market, we jumped in, and somebody was out of the office on that particular day. So it really just helps to make sure that we've got the, we've got the necessary authority signatures to move forward.
So we could actually entertain a motion as read, leaving that language that way, or do we need to read it exactly like you have in the recommended action page?
I would just move.
As we read it? Okay.
Second.
Oh, I didn't move.
George moved, so.
Did George move?
I'll second.
He moved this way.
I'll move it.
Okay. We have a motion to approve on the first and last reading, ordinance number 2017-22, as presented. And, and we have a second.
Second.
So all in favor, would you please raise your hand? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, all of you, for coming this evening, and we are taking your word for it as professionals. We're doing the right thing.
Thank you.
Can I add, can I add one more thing to this? It's not part of the motion or anything like that, just as a thing. I understand the urgency behind this particular one, but after talking with some other people, attorneys, TML, and whatnot, the government code that we're recognizing as giving us the authority to supersede our charter does not actually require us to supersede our charter. As a policy, I would like to see us not supersede our charter on especially bond-issue ordinances. In this case, it made a lot of sense, but I just would like to see us not do that.
And I think we had that discussion several times, as Anne mentioned, but the reason that I was given is the timing.
Right. In this case, it makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, I got you. Okay. Item number 5C is ordinance number 2017-23, amending Chapter 6, advertising Article 2 signs, Section 6-36, exempt signs of the city's code of ordinances to exempt from permitting pole banner signs used by hospital services containing a savings and severability clause providing for penalties not to exceed $2,000 ordering publication, providing an effective date, providing other matters related to the subject, Ms. Consul.
Yes, good evening. This item comes before you. It's a fairly simple ordinance amendment to our sign code, but it comes, there's a little history here that I'll go over. Peterson Hospital has some banner signs that they put up a little over a year ago, I believe. And just to show you, this was their, their sign plan that they had internally. So several of the light poles out on the property had these banners out there. We did respond to a complaint. It was a series of several complaints for several sites that we went out and investigated, and these signs actually did not meet our, we're in violation of our sign code, which only allows one banner, and it has a certain time period per site. There were 14 of these, and so here's an example of one, and just a different color and different location. We had some discussion at the staff level with the, with the CEO of the hospital to talk through some options as far as whether to pursue a sign variance request, or to, or to propose a, an amendment to our sign code. They chose to go the variance route, and we went to the Planning and Zoning Commission on October the 19th, I believe. The Planning and Zoning Commission did struggle with the variance request, but did approve the variance, and at the same time instructed us to review the sign code and bring forward a possible ordinance amendment. And we were going to kind of use the opportunity to review the rest of the sign ordinance at the same time and bring, and bring a larger ordinance review forward, but this is the item that is before you this evening. It's fairly simple, just to cover hospital sites and the banners.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to propose that we hold this and let the, let the process run its course. I watched the video of that meeting, and it looked to me like several members of the Planning and Zoning Commission expected the draft revisions to come back to them before it came to the city council, and I just feel like there's no rush. The hospital got their variance, so why wouldn't we allow the process to just run its course? This should, this, honestly, I wish we'd give the staff time to consider amendments to the whole sign ordinance, take that to planning and zoning, and then bring it to us all at once, then sort of these piecemeal and ad hoc changes.
And, and so I did as well, watched the meeting, and just, just a few comments, and then I will give to council what I think are our options here, and I think it's okay probably either way we do it. I watched the meeting, and one of the things that Ms. Consul mentioned, I believe the variance as approved was, approved as a community service sign, which actually, Ms. Consul said, these do not meet the definition of a community service. Those are temporary signs that, you know, are put up for community events. Also, it was to allow, the variance as applied for by Mr. Murray was to allow more than one banner, which was the variance he was asking for, because they had 14 of them. It wasn't to change the definition. It also did not meet the eight criteria that Mr. Hayes stated it should meet, and Mr. Murray admitted that as well, in all honesty, and he was actually in favor of doing the amendment that you suggested, rather than a variance. Where we sit now is that, according to Mr. McDaniel, the P&amp;Z has pretty much legislative power to define the variance any way they'd like. So it's sitting there kind of objectively, in my opinion, a little bit shaky in its legality, but it's there. And the other thing that we could do, we could leave it as it is, or we could do the amendment as proposed, although if we do, I think we ought to eliminate the five-acre in size, because that's almost just saying, putting a name on who wants the variant, I mean, who wants to be named here. And what we're presented here today, and I realize it was last-minute preparation, but it doesn't say in the proposed amendment how many, what size, materials required, spacing, or any of those other kind of things. So I don't think that we lose either way at this point, and I agree that we need to bring this back, and so does staff, as a discussion of the whole sign ordinance, because if we're going to allow it, pole signs, which we don't address at all, this variance came under banners, then, then we might need to look at it for other industries as well. So that's kind of the way I see it. If we allow it to stay as is, it is approved by P&amp;Z, however they did it, and we could wait until the discussion comes back to do the amendment, or we can do the amendment as suggested here. That's up to council. If we do, though, you know, I think we ought to eliminate the five-acre thing and just make it hospital services. So that's my two cents. I'm not making a suggestion. I'd like, I'd like to hear from Mr. Hayes about the strength of the variance.
Well, yeah, I don't agree. I was looking at, there's some P&amp;Z members here. I don't want them to think that it was shaky. I don't think it was. They, they had the prongs in front of them, and they made a motion for a variance, and I think the hospital got what they wanted.
Yeah.
Went away happy. The hospital, as I recall, I haven't looked at the video, was going to be okay with amendments to the sign ordinance, but of course, they, you know, they wanted to leave the meeting with authority to go put up their banners. And so we'll, we'll do whatever council wants. You know, this came in Wednesday or Thursday of the last week, and I quickly cobbled something together, and this will, this will, you know, I don't even want to say solidify, this will just kind of reinforce that they have an authority to put these banners up. My recommendation to you, though, is to come back and look at it if you want to regulate these banners in some form or fashion, as the mayor suggested, because I think it would be hard-pressed to tell the hospital they could do it and other entities that they could not. So that's my recommendation.
Okay, so let me give my two cents, because as an answer to the why rush, I was the one who requested it be put on here, and the reasoning was that the variance as it was presented, the prongs that we're all talking about, they're in the ordinances when you do a variance, and one of them is that the, if strict adherence to the ordinance produces a hardship on the applicant. And P&amp;Z has the authority to decide that on their own, which they did. The problem with it is that the applicant in their application answered that specific question, saying, no, it doesn't provide a hardship. So what that leaves us with is a situation where the variance is being put out there, and it sort of undercuts the evaluation that we use on all variances. Again, the hospital, we're really just trying to get, I think everybody, P&amp;Z especially, agrees that these signs at this location were wishing to make allowable. And so rather than wait for the, it could be a long time, and it took them forever to do the sign ordinance to start with, right? So to review the sign ordinance is probably not going to be an overnight affair. So the idea was to get us off a variance that kind of conflicts with the evaluation process of variance, and get us to an amendment that we could actually agree on as being allowable.
Who, who, who said, no, it didn't work a hardship?
The hospital's application for variance, there's a question you have to answer.
How binding is that, Mr. Hayes? Is that application form, does that bind?
Well, no.
With P&amp;Z in any way?
No, and I think you can make the argument that P&amp;Z didn't, you know, that didn't bother them at all. They, again, they had those conditions in front of them, and then they made a motion to grant the variance.
So even if the applicant said, checked it wrong, or misinterpreted it, or something, it's the P&amp;Z's decision that matters?
Right. I mean, unless they, you know, they were somehow, you know, arbitrary and capricious in their understanding, but they had, I mean, we probably had 45 minutes of deliberation on that issue. So, yeah, they took it all in. They, they listened to the hospital, they listened to staff, they talked amongst themselves, and I think at the end of the day, they issued a variance that holds water, that's legal, and, and again, gave the hospital exactly what they wanted, which isn't to say we shouldn't go back and, you know, address it in the ordinance.
Yeah, and that's all I was saying. I'm not blaming the P&amp;Z. They, I think the signs are beautiful. I think the hospital did a wonderful job, and Mr. Murray did admit, I should have checked with the ordinance, you know, before we put them up. We really don't have anything applicable to pole signs, and so I think they look great. I think they'll be there in the future. I don't have a problem with them. I'm just looking at fairness. I don't blame the person that made the complaints, because obviously, someone was denied that opportunity to do that, and so they went around town, according to the testimony, and found 13 other people who were doing it. And so I guess the argument was, why can't we? And I think that's what you addressed for us. And all I'm saying, I think P&amp;Z did what they thought was good and right, but I was just looking at the testimony, and I think we need to look at our process, because Sabina said it doesn't meet the definition of community service in the meeting, and Mr. Hayes said it must meet all eight criteria, which Mr. Murray admitted it did not. I still don't have a problem with the banners. I think they're nice. I just think that we need to look at our process and be consistent whenever we make these decisions. So I really don't care either way, what the way council goes this evening. If you want to leave it as stands and visit this later, as you suggested, but win the sign ordinance, I don't have a problem with that. If you want to look at proposing an amendment, Mr. Brody, for temporary, and we'll come back, and maybe, I'm sure, it will be amended again.
Correct. So that's a, basically, it gets to, is there a downside to leaving it as it is and going forward with the variance as it is? Or is there a downside to doing the amendment? So I would like to see us, this is the first reading of an amendment, I'd like to see us go through with the first reading of this amendment and move forward.
If you make that.
Am I just going to make a motion at this point?
If you do that, I would ask that you eliminate the five-acre thing. Make it as simple as possible, hospital services. I don't know why you would say limited to fi, greater than five acres.
Well, because of, you know, distraction. If, if we suddenly get 14 pole banners at HEB and 14 more at Crinwell.
No, just hospital services. Just hospital services, that's fine. I just don't see why we have to say five acres. It's almost like pointing, naming something, but that's up to you.
Yeah, because actually, originally, it was, the thought was that it was going to get lumped in with the KISD as sort of a public service entity. So we're not looking to add this to the clinics and whatnot that are providing hospital services. So that's, I think, the reason the five acres was added. Because arguably, the hospital is a different entity than a private clinic.
I would just say hospital. Shouldn't, shouldn't an amendment to the sign ordinance go back to the P&amp;Z before it comes to council? In the normal course of things?
It's not required by our sign code. They have reviewed amendments before. Of course, they're responsible for variances.
It just sounded to me like they expected that to happen.
I, I think Sabina looked, researched that issue, and we, if you want to address that. I didn't go back and look at the video.
I, I did go back and look at the video to make sure that there wasn't an expectation, because I wasn't sure. And I did speak with the, with the chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and his point was, we just wanted to see it get done.
Oh, okay.
And that there was not necessarily, not, not in his mind, anyway, that there was necessarily an expectation that it came back to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Well, I'm, I'm always super cautious about micromanaging and interfering in things that are supposed to have a set process. So I'm glad that we're not stepping on Planning and Zoning's toes.
I had one more question, Ms. Trace, and then I'll entertain a motion, but I remember, seemed to remember before a couple of times that we had variances brought before council, in particular sidewalk ordinance for Guadalupe RV and one on the Loop, and it went through planning and zoning, and they approved it, and it came to city council, and it had to be deliberated as well. So for a variance, is that not the process?
Well, I think you're talking about variances for public improvements, sidewalks.
I think the sidewalk one, if I'm not mistaken. No, I think it actually was an appeal. I think P&amp;Z had turned it down, hadn't they? And so it was an appeal.
Well, regardless, though, because you all would ultimately be responsible for those costs, that's why that type of variance comes to council.
So it's
So it's different than signs? Okay. Thank you, that was the explanation I needed. Okay.
Mayor, I'd like to move that we hold this ordinance until the staff has time to consider the whole ordinance and amendments that may be needed.
A motion, we have a motion to defer. Is there a second?
I'll second that. I would prefer to see it all resolved.
Okay.
Properly and appropriately, I guess.
All right, we have a motion and a second to defer this to a later date. All in favor, would you raise your hand? All opposed? Motion carries three to two. We will defer. Okay, item number 6A. Construction contract with M and C Fonseca Construction Company, Inc. for the River Trail West Improvements Project as part of the River Trail Project in the amount of $649,658.50, and authorized city manager to execute additional change orders which will not exceed a total contract value of $715,000. Mr. Hoppe?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We're pleased to report to you tonight that we got good bids that came in from the recent bidding activity for the River Trail Project. This does, the project includes just over 2,500 linear feet of 10-foot wide concrete trail, two concrete trailheads, asphalt parking improvements, water and electrical service, and associated limestone block retaining walls, as well as grading and drainage improvements. Essentially, this takes the River Trail from the Lowery Park along Guadalupe Street West to the Deert Center, and makes the improvements that you all have effectuated already within the license agreement that you approved last month. So we did get a positive, successful bid, lowest qualified bidder of M.C. Fonseca Construction Company. That bid, in addition to the two additions that we, within the original package, which we had brought forth to the Deert Center and to the council, came back with a total cost of $649,658, with the element there with total contract value of $715,000. If you have any questions, you may have.
Any questions by council?
Is this where I bring it up again? It's not, but I'm going to bring it up anyways. Page five of the contract stipulating the expense for trailhead flagstone limestone edging, kind of similar to Vincent when he brings up food trucks. I'm going to keep bringing up those rumble strips that they put on there, on the real, and I think that's what that is. I'd like to see them consider something a little less destructive to bicycles, if you know what I'm talking about.
We can do that.
Okay, anyways.
No problem.
I hate to ask this, but, you know, going through, we just got this today, I asked if I could have Mr. McDaniel send us the breakdown on the bid. And I don't know, maybe this is so standard, but item number 14, $14,000 for a drinking fountain? I don't know, because that just seems high to me. Is that?
I don't think it's just the fountain.
Yeah, I think it's.
One-inch waterline, including all accessories, for a drinking fountain.
Yeah, I believe it's the full installation of the package itself.
Extension of water.
That's right.
Not drink, it says drinking. I know it's at the trailhead, and I don't know, do we have any others at any trailheads? Any water fountains?
Yes, ma'am, I believe we do.
Do we?
Yes.
Okay. Because I know we're going to use the restroom facilities there, you know, in the Deert Center and.
Yeah, and these are built to a little bit higher quality, because they're essentially not covered, so they're, you know, exposed to the elements a little bit more than what you would see, you know, on the outside of a building.
Doesn't include a one-inch waterline?
Yeah, to the building, across the parking lot. And actual trail itself is like $300,000 plus the dirt work, and then a lot of it is for the paving and improvements inside. And I'm glad it came in under bid.
Yes.
We have it in the budget, so.
Came under bid and came under the engineer's estimate. We were originally estimating about $734,000, so it came out about 13% less than what the engineer's estimate was. Had a pretty sharp pencil on this one.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Any questions from the audience?
Just a comment. Mayor, we, you know, we've got our council procedures and rules, and Rule 7.6 says that when a council member asks for information from the manager, the manager answers everybody, and it happened this time. And so that it came into, we all had this at the start of the meeting, and I appreciate that very much, and I think that ought to be real standard practice.
Yeah, and I think it probably has, has been, and that's a good point, yes. It is, and I think Mr. McDaniel's been real good about that. Okay, if there's no more questions, I will entertain a motion to approve.
I make a motion, I move that we approve the contract as.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, a second to authorize city manager to execute a construction contract with M and C Fonseca. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, Ms. Hoppe.
Yes, ma'am.
6B, Resolution Number 42-2017, authorizing a waiver of various fees associated with construction activities for the property located at 602 Spur 100 within the city of Kerrville, Texas. This was a citizen request. Mr. Volkman?
Mayor, City Council. My name is Steve Volkman. I'm the executive director of Veterans Assistance Dogs of Texas. And one correction, it's actually 601 Spur 100, not 602.
Okay.
But what we do is we take rescue shelter dogs, we train them to be service dogs, and we give them at no cost to disabled veterans that live in the state of Texas. And we're putting a, we have five acres next to Freeman Fritz, and we're putting in six park models, and what those are going to serve as is a location for the veterans that are around the state, as well as maybe San Antonio, or maybe even local, to come and stay in those park models while they're doing the final training with their dog. What happens is the dog gets trained by our trainers, passes both CGC and public access tests, and so we know we've got a good service dog. Then we've got to pair that dog with a veteran, and that we have to have the veteran and the dog work together and become a certified team. Right now, if they're, if the veterans up in Amarillo, or El Paso, or Dallas, we've got to get the dog up there, we've got to get a trainer up there, and then we've got to, it generally takes about 12 weeks, eight to 12 weeks, in order to get that process taken care of. We bring the veteran down here on our nickel and have them stay there. The trainer works with the veteran every day, and we can get that done probably in eight to 10, 14 days. And so then they can go back to their home. So what we're asking for is, we had a little confusion when we, when we had our meeting with the PNC, but the park models don't require us to have any permits, but the hookup of the water, the electric, the permit for the concrete for the aprons out front, those have fees associated with them, and so we were asking for relief in that. I think it's to the, I think it's about $875, is what I heard.
What's a park model?
Have you ever seen the tiny homes thing on show? And those are treated by the code as, like an RV, instead of, as long as we keep the wheels underneath them. We might skirt them so that we don't see the wheels and stuff like that, so aesthetically it's pleasing, but we'll keep those there. Well, because what we have to have is, we have to have a home environment that the veteran and the dog train in, so we have to have a kitchen, and a bedroom, and a bathroom, and those type things. And so the 400 square feet gives us that opportunity to do that, so.
And so the request is to have the permitting fees waived, and they are 501(c)(3).
Yes.
And I've seen your presentation before, appreciate what you do.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments by council?
Mayor, for clarification in the resolution, it's not for tap fees or anything like that. It's parkland dedication fee, building, electrical, plumbing, and mechanical fees, and plating and replating fees.
And that was in our packet, I believe, the last meeting when we didn't hear from you. So I'm sorry about that, but I wanted to make sure that you were here in case there were.
No, no problem.
As we've had questions about this.
There was confusion when, once they said it was park models and we didn't have any permits, the assumption was, okay, well then the fees go away, but then.
Oh, I see. But these are inspections more, right?
Other than, and this is a question for Mr. McDaniel, other than the man-hours that may be involved in these inspections or whatnot, is there any other cost to the city in these permits?
It's mostly man-hours.
Okay.
And the actual inspections themselves.
Okay.
Which is man-hours.
Right.
Okay. If there are no more questions, I will entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 42-2017.
I make a motion to approve it with a change to the address to 601.
Is that in the resolution? Yes.
My second.
A motion, a second, all in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, and good luck.
Thank you, thanks.
Item number 6C, Resolution Number 44-2017, casting vote to the city of Kerrville, Texas for her central appraisal district board of directors. Ms. Craig?
On October 26, the city received a ballot from KCAD with seven candidates for five positions for the board of directors for the term 2018, 2019. The ballot includes Judy Eichner, was, and she was previously nominated by the city council to serve as the city's representative. There are a total of 5,000 votes among all taxing entities in Kerr County, and the city has allocated 704 votes. The city council may allocate all of its votes entirely to one candidate, or split the votes between the candidates. The city may not initiate a recall of a director unless it has cast at least one vote for that director. Therefore, it is recommended that the city cast 698 votes for Judy Eichner and one vote for each of the remaining six candidates. The city must cast the ballot by December 31. And therefore, I would recommend approval of Resolution 44-2017, casting 698 votes for Judy Eichner, and casting one vote for each of the remaining candidates, which would be Ray Orr, Patrick Friedel, Charles Lewis, Judy Webb Smith, Carter Crane, and Scott Turner.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
Is that the way we always do it?
Generally, yes. It's not anticipated that we're going to initiate a recall, but, you know, and it's never happened that I know of, but there's always a chance.
Okay, any other questions or comments? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 44-2017 as presented.
With that voting, right?
Yes, with that voting as Ms. Craig presented.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second? I'll second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you very much. Ms. Eichner here? Tell her thank you. Okay, item number 6D, Resolution Number 45-2017, creating seven subcommittees as part of the comprehensive planning effort for Kerrville 2050, and making appointments there, too. Ms. McDaniel?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So it's time to move on with this part of our comprehensive planning process, where the council's asked to appoint seven committees, subcommittees, that will work on seven different chapters or components of the plan. Most of you have given me names to populate those committees to each, from each council member, so that's what this, this item does with attachment A. There was a new attachment A, or exhibit A, provided to you at your places when you came in, correcting some spellings and changing out a couple of names. I realize it's hard to kind of sort through that many names and that many people and get back to them, so this is the latest version. We do have some slots that are still open, and so what I would ask is that you all approve this resolution as presented, and then allow any respective council member to finalize their nominations and appointments prior to the close of business on Thursday, so that we can get this done this week. The other thing that this resolution does is it points chairs for each of the subcommittees from your steering committee. I have recommended chairs for each of those, and I'll just go ahead and name those now so that the public is aware. For economic development, Walter Koenig. For community neighborhood character and placemaking, Sarah Hammond Distel. For mobility and transportation, Jonathan Letts. For water, wastewater and drainage, Mike Welburn. For public facilities and services, Tina Woods. For river corridor parks, open space, Karen Guerrero. And for downtown revitalization, David Thomas Jones. All of those serve on the steering committee, and so they would then be reporting back out to the full steering committee, along with the staff, about the activities of these groups. Again, it's anticipated that these committees will probably meet three times, possibly four. We were mapping out the schedule with the consultants this morning. So if you all approve this today, we'll begin arranging meetings. The first meeting will probably be either the last week of this month, or it will be the first week or second week in December. So the sooner we have these folks named, then the sooner that we can organize the meetings. And if I failed to mention it, there's also some steering committee members that, for personal reasons, cannot continue to serve. So this resolution also allows any council member to replace any member of the steering committee that they nominated before the end of this month. And so we're aware of two, at least two of those, and those have been incorporated into the current steering committee, assuming this approves, that any of you could do that prior to the end of this month.
And my question that I had for Mr. McDaniel was, did these people agree to serve?
Yes, all of them have agreed.
And he said yes, in all positions, so. Any questions or comments by council? If not, I would look for a motion to approve Resolution Number 45-2017 as presented. So moved.
Mayor, can we add, with the ability of the council to finalize their appointments by Thursday?
Yes. I'll move adoption with that, proviso.
Second.
If we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Thank you, Walter. Okay, 6C is. Are there any others? Yeah, are there any others that are on the subcommittees here? You stand up. And we'll, thank you.
Sure.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. For your ability and willingness, Ms. Thorpe. Okay, item number 6E is enter local agreement between Kerr County, Texas, and the city of Kerrville for the provision of animal control services within the city of Kerrville, Texas, and services of the Buttholes Work Memorial Library for residents of Kerr County. This is a completely new thing that nobody's ever talked about before, right, Commissioner? Mr. McDaniel?
Well, at long last, we're at this point, and I want to thank Commissioner Moser for helping me and the staff to get to this point, as well as you, Mayor. We've been back and forth for a few months now, and I think we're now at the point where we're about to go across the goal line with this. So it's been a long time coming, and I think that we're very excited about the ability to provide library services for all of Kerr County in exchange for enhanced animal services for our community, which we desperately need, so our police officers don't have to carry animals in the back of their squad cars. So with your approval today, this would be effective January 1st, and I don't know if the commissioner wants to make comments. You're welcome to do that.
Yes, he does.
Thank you, Mark. City Council, Mayor, assuming that you pass this, I want to thank you for the knowledge you've been doing. The, the library is a critically important asset to this whole community, and it's been enjoyed by all members of the county from 1969 to 2012, and at that time, we had a problem. It's kind of like Houston, we have a problem, well, Kerrville, Kerr County, we have a problem. It's been five years resolving that problem, but it is resolved, so mission is accomplished. I want to thank Mark for being creative on this and working with everybody, the staff of the city, the staff of the county. I think it's, it's the benefit, the people are going to benefit from this, for all the citizens, though, so, for this critically important asset that we have. So thank you, everybody, for that.
Thank you for your hard work on this, Commissioner. I know when I put you two together, I knew we were going to come up with something. Was it, were there a couple of typos or things that you said need to be corrected for? We need to make.
In talking with the city attorney, they're not substantial enough that would require any sort of amendments.
May I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
I just, I want to understand how animal services are required to be provided by the state. Does the state require counties to provide minimal services, like rabies, and this is an enhancement? Or what's that story?
The way that environmental health works in the state of Texas is that the state will provide services even for things like restaurant inspection. But it's very basic, and it's, it's not very good, just because they don't have the resources, and they're spread very thin. It also extends to things like clinics. So if a community wants an enhanced level of service, it's on their own dime. And so we're, the county's not obligated to provide animal control services, for example, the patrol and dealing with stray animals, adoptions, euthanasia, all of that. They are, to some extent, responsible for social services by state law, and so rabies control is one of those things that they would need to be attending to. If they did not, then the state would step in and help with that, but, you know, because we want to deal with that, and in our community, the county has stepped up, and they're providing rabies. rabies control. So it's not required, but it's, you know, the appropriate thing to do.
Thank you.
I had a question and a comment. It does expand the services of the animal shelter to five days a week. We had that question earlier today. Eight to five, am I right?
Yes.
Eight to five, which is an improvement over the hours that they're offering now, and people are happy about that. I did have a question about page four, item number C. It's, "Within 90 days of the full execution of the agreement, the city will amend the membership makeup of the library advisory board to provide that one member of the five-member board may be appointed by the county." And I presume we'll see that come before us, before then. Thereafter, and following a vacancy to the board, the county may appoint a member. Does that mean their member, any member?
Their member.
Their member?
Their member.
Okay, not, okay, any member of the board. I just had a question about the way it was worded there. So that'll be good.
I have a question about the initial evaluation period that happens at the end of March. What's the expectation of what's going to be evaluated at that point? What are we looking for there?
We'll be looking at, and I'll let the Commissioner answer as well, but we'll be looking at what the actual costs are, what the actual calls are in terms of service levels, the impact to our operations. So for example, at the library, we're not adding any staff. We'll have the same staff that we have today, and back when we did have full service to the library, we had a little more staff. But we also have better technology, and more people are using eBooks and so forth. So we want to see what the impact is without adding staff. The county has gone back and looked at in more detail about what it's going to take to require or to provide animal services at an enhanced level beyond what they're doing today, so they are looking at adding staff, and I'll let the Commissioner speak to that.
Yeah, that's correct. I think you covered it adequately. We're adding staff to be able to provide the additional services, and we just want to take a look at the operations of both, as Mark said, of the library and the operations of animal control, to make sure that we can do everything that we've said in the local agreement we're going to do, so.
I think the way it's been, you propose to implement it makes a whole lot of sense. By doing a bit and taking a look.
Sure.
Then going ahead.
Yeah, well...
You know, yes, I think...
Well, I think, you know...
Rather than try to lay out something for five or 10 years without any knowledge of how it's going to work out. So I applaud the...
Full credit to Mark for that, because he's the one that said...
Whoever gets it, I'll be happy to applaud.
Let's take it, try it, and see how it fits.
Yeah, for sure.
So, I think it's a good way.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Manager, how much, how much will it cost us to meet our accreditation for a bigger service area?
We actually already do.
Super.
Yes, and so that was a big consideration for us in terms of what additional costs we might take on, and so Laura took a hard look at that, our librarian. And we'll be in good shape for a number of years, just with the current staff we have, the number of librarians we have, the number of materials we have.
Do we have to buy more books or subscribe to more magazines?
Nope, nope.
Well, if we hit a certain population, I think it's 50,000, but that's...
That's a ways off.
Beyond Kerrville 2050.
Well, maybe not beyond 2050.
Well, yeah, so... Well, any other...
I move approval.
All right, approval of the interlocal agreement.
Second.
And second, all in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries five to zero. Congratulations, everyone.
Bravo.
Yes, bravo. Item number 6F is to review the trihalomethane reduction design report and direct staff regarding the finalization of engineering for the selected water treatment method. Mr. Hoppy, you going to begin?
Yes, ma'am. I'm just going to briefly introduce this item and then have Mr. Stuart Baron come up, our Perfect Works Director. As you recall from our workshop in the October timeframe, the city is under state mandate and TCU enforcement action regarding TTHM, and that is based off of our utilization of surface water and the organic compounds that are found within that. We have been monitoring for TTHMs per state mandate since about October of 2013. We've been in enforcement action for about the last 12 months or so, and as you know, we've notified you guys of the notices that we issue basically on a quarterly basis. And so, council provided an engineering contract, hired Freezer Nichols to provide analysis to determine, look at two different primary methods of treatment that can help alleviate the TTHM issue for Kerrville, and that is the use of chloramines or the use of granular activated carbon. And so, we've received that report, we provided a great deal of that information to you all at the workshop in October, but we're at a critical juncture tonight in looking, getting direction from you in the next phase of the engineering contract, and that is determining which path you'd like for us to go on, so that way we can complete the engineering contract, stay on track with, hopefully having this item to bid later on in 2018, mid-2018, so we can actually go ahead and solve that problem. So with that, I'd like to go ahead and introduce Mr. Stuart Baron to come up and further brief the city council.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. First, I'd like to acknowledge the engineers that are here, Kendall King and Mark Graves. Mark is actually the author of the report that y'all saw in the October workshop, and so if you have any particular questions about that, I'm sure you'll be able to answer them. I mean, he did a, did a great job of giving a historical look at the TTHM as the state mandated, started in 2013, and as we rolled that forward, we have exceeded our TTHM levels. We tried a number of different approaches to getting that down, tried to, some low-hanging fruit, see if there's anything we could do that would, that would allow us to save some money. We've tried looping lines, we have air scrubbers in some of our tanks, at the stadium tanks, we've tried lowering the tank level so the water age in the tank doesn't get so old or nor so hot. We've also tried different chemicals at the water treatment plant, additional oxidation chemicals at the plant, nothing has seemed to work. So we did hire Freezer Nichols in 2017, April of this year, to do a study and assess the two different options. One is the granular activated carbon, and other is trihalomethanes. You may ask yourself, what were some of the other options that we could do at the plant? Could we expand the xenon plant and actually get, get the same benefit as doing the granular activated carbon or the chloramines? The answer is that is typically no. There was an anomaly when we were testing the two different plants. The conventional water treatment plant produced about 80 milligrams per liter of TTHMs, and then the conventional plant was about 60. But during the research, we found out that that's not normally the case. Usually, the conventional plant, or the xenon plant doesn't, doesn't remove more than the conventional type plant. Some of the other options that we would look at, or you may think of, is there any benefit in the clarifier? Do we still need the clarifier if we're going to move forward?
I'm sorry, let me be real clear. You said the xenon plant does not remove more of the organics than the conventional method?
It filters more of them, and our testing indicated that there was more of a reduction, but from the research that we've read shows that it's not, that's not the intention of that plant, is to remove more of the, or the carbon out of the, out of the water itself. There is some treatments that you can do, some different kinds of chemicals, not necessarily the oxidizers, but to optimize that. We've tried the ferric sulfate, and it tends to have a corrosive environment within the plant. That's part of what's wrong with the clarifier right now, is it's eating up the shield around it. It also eats up the copper that serves, that's in our service lines to each one of the customers. So there, yes, ma'am, that's correct. There's, the research says it doesn't offer any benefit. The actual testing shows a little bit of a benefit.
So what is the purpose, then, of the xenon plant?
The...
Of the xenon filters?
It's capacity, isn't it?
It was, it was in addition to the, to the conventional water treatment plant at the time. They didn't want to expand it. The water treatment plant was a 1970s model, when they needed more capacity at the, at the plant itself, they upgraded with the ultrafiltration. Actually has a lot better filtering mechanism than the conventional plant does. It just doesn't particularly move the organic material. It's a dissolved material in the water.
I'm interested in understanding taste and odor problems.
Okay.
Particularly taste, because I got to drink it.
Okay. Well, taste and odor is going to be associated with chloramines, so the pros of the chloramine are, are there, it's a weaker disinfectant, and so it doesn't produce the TTHM, it does have a lower cost. Some of the cons is the potential impact on our ASR system. Yes, let me address yours, is this nitrification. So what happens is it's a weaker disinfectant, so it doesn't kill everything in the lines itself. The nitrogen's able to stay in the lines, actually produces bacteria in the lines, and the bacteria feed on the nitrogen. When you do, when you have a, you know, when you chlorinate, superchlorinate those lines, you do it twice a year to kill the bacteria. At that time, when that bacteria is dying and dead and decaying in the lines, you discharge it out onto the ground, but there's still a taste and odor that you get associated with that, with that bacteria dying off. Let me go back up to bullet point number one, the impact on our ASR system. It's not real well-known how the chloramines will enter, how they'll react with our aquifer. There's one other outfit that's doing, I believe, there in Florida. But we're not certain that the chloramines will not lock up the aquifer and cause us to have some sort of issue with our ASR system. Right now, most, all of the water that's in our ASR system is chlorinated. How that chlorine reacts with the limestone in the aquifer and also the highly chlorinated water that's in there, there would need to be some more studying done to figure out if we're willing to chance that or not.
Yeah, page nine says the water drawn from the ASR will contain chloramines.
Yes, it would, right. Other regulatory limits, we'd have to have a lot of monitoring of the chlorine and how, or excuse me, the chloramines, how effective it is, also all the reporting that will need to go along with that to verify that we're not, that we're doing the die-offs in the right time and flushing everything. And then the new ammonia that feed systems is a con as well. Each, each one of our well sites, excuse me, we'd have to have one at the water treatment plant itself, and each one of the well sites would need a chloramine or a tank for the, for the ammonia, excuse me. So the granular activated carbon is, it's highly effective in removing organics, decreases TTHM formation potential, also removes taste and odor. I don't know if anybody has a filter under their sink. Most of those have a carbon filter in them. Brita is kind of a carbon filter, that's the kind of thing we would be doing at larger scale. No adverse effects on the water in our ASR system or aquifer, no potentially toxic byproducts. The cons is it's, it requires us to relocate where we're injecting chlorine at our water treatment plant, and it's medium to high cost to, to install this facility. Chloramines conversion, as we talked about earlier, we would have to have the ammonia tanks, the liquid ammonia sulfate at each one of the injection sites, and there'd be eight wells, one at each well at our ASR sites and then at the water treatment plant. The conceptual engineering cost estimate for this is $2.5 million, with a life cycle and an annual operating cost of $150,000. Granular activated treatment, construction components, there would be, we would, we would not have to filter the entire flow from the water treatment plant. This, the research shows that we need to filter about 3 million gallons a day to get our average down, that we would be in compliance with TCU rules, so that's what we're proposing here. There would be three vessels, each vessel holding about 40,000 pounds of the granular activated carbon, which we would pump water through those vessels, so you would have to have a feeds, a feed station, and our feed pump station, and then a backwash station to discharge all that water back out of those filters. Piping, electrical, so on, that's associated with that.
Before I forget my question, can we just break in and ask a question there?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so what you said is we wouldn't be filtering all of the water, so that gives our overall system average down. If these are really bad things, then what's it really saying to the ones that are getting water that isn't filtered? Because their, their numbers will be higher, won't they?
It's mixed, right?
It's all mixed.
diluted.
It's, so we're just, we're getting the average down. So the water's the same all over town as it's coming out of the plant, but it, but we are, we are below the threshold of what they're considering is questionable. Okay? Estimated concept, or estimated construction cost is $4.1 million. The life cycle and ongoing maintenance is $400, $410,000. That, that does include all the training that we'll need for our operators. The $4.1 and the $2.5 million do not include engineering cost. However, the engineering costs are already in this evaluation phase that we're looking at today. So with that, I will answer questions, maybe with the assistance of, of anybody, Freezer Nichols, if you would.
Well, we are looking for direction from the council on which route to pursue, so that we can bring back to you, you know, proceed with the design and then bring back to you through a bidding process, the construction and implementation. So this is a point where we need to show, demonstrate some progress on one of these options.
Do both alternatives have the same life, or does one have a longer life than the other?
I think both of them, maybe I can let Mark sound off if he will, but the, the operating cost is going to be ongoing, you're going to have that every year. You're going to have some wear items, the, the, the filters themselves are going to have to be changed out twice a year, the media, or if you, if you do the regeneration of charcoal, you'd have to change that out accordingly. But there, there are some hardware components, those hardware components would, would wear out, but as, for the immediate life cycle, it's just the $410,000.
And my question along those lines is, which method does that $408,000 reflect? Is it the replacement or regeneration?
The 410?
The 400, well, it's eight in our book, but 410, the operating cost every year, there's two methods to maintain and operate that you list in your carbon regeneration or purchase of new activated carbon filters. So that 410, which is that, changing them out, or is that doing the carbon regeneration? Because that uses a thermal process to clean the existing filters.
It's the, it's new.
Come on up, Mark.
New ones, replacement.
Yes.
And that's obviously the easier option, it doesn't entail training and timing, but what would be the cost difference if you actually did the carbon regeneration process?
Well, there are some very large facilities in Ohio that do the regeneration on site, but what would be envisioned here would be the manufacturer of the carbon would take it back to their facility, and then they would regenerate it. And they would, and they would segregate the particular carbon here, so that we get the same carbon back that we sent them. The cost difference is, it depends on if, right now, it's done in Arizona, so there's a lot of transportation costs for the manufacturer that I'm aware of, Calgon, that does regeneration. The cost difference is, I think it's maybe a 10, 20% decrease in the, in the cost. With regeneration, the media isn't completely returned to its original state, so there's a decrease in its capacity to absorb organics over time. So, we assume new, fresh carbon every time in the cost estimates, but could certainly look at regeneration.
Well, I mean, it's safer, in my book, it would be safer to just replace, but if you had the expertise and you could do it, I just didn't know what all that would involve.
Mm-hmm.
So that's, that is for replacement.
Shipping it back and forth to Arizona.
Yeah, that would be a lot. I thought it might be something you could do on site, so.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's very complicated. You kind of described it as furnaces and a lot, it'd be a very industrial kind of dangerous process to try and accomplish on site.
I keep coming back to the fact that I'm just not in favor of bad water. Stinky, doesn't taste good. I'm, I'm clearly in favor of water that tastes and smells good, and, you know, people come here to buy a home, they go look at a home, and they turn the hydrant on and it comes out stinky.
It's not good.
After they do it a couple of times, they're going to say, well, Kerrville must have stinky water.
For the Freezer Nichols representative, you know, obviously, my question is going to be ultimately, Mr. McDaniel, can we afford it? That's the biggest, number one. I'm all for, we had this discussion a while back, and I had read a lot about the chloramines and was very concerned, and now I see that probably headwaters would be concerned as well, if we put that water down in the aquifer. Mary Ellen, you would know, because it does continually...
And if I clog up our pumps, you could...
Correct. But it's a lot of money and the maintenance, annual maintenance, and we are, we are swamped with the effluent project that we're on now. It's tremendous operating cost and, and debt service on that. So my question is going to be ultimately, can we afford it, of course? The other thing is, because we're looking at water quality overall, and we're trying to do the most cost-effective and most efficient way to do that, what about, and I'm very surprised to hear about the xenon plant. My thought is that if we could expand that, which was our original plan, that we could process twice as much as we're doing there, mix it with our other conventionally treated water, and maybe that would be a cheaper fix, because at one time, it was about a million bucks to double the size of our xenon. Because at one time, it was about a million bucks to double the size of our xenon plant. So that in the mix, the other thing, we've looped some lines, we've not looped all of our lines. So we currently discharge at the end of those stagnant lines, the water by millions of gallons out into the atmosphere. So that's another thing that, I'm just looking at a total plan, because that's what you were charged to do. What can we do for the fix? And I had thought, maybe wrongly, that if we double the plant, if we looked at looping some more of our lines, maybe looking at some of the lines that we currently have, what kind of condition are the water distribution lines in? We heard from somebody the other day, we may even have asphalt or something, I mean, asbestos in some of those. I don't know what condition those are. Wondered if some of that might be in the mix. You see what I'm saying? We're trying to look at an overall plan to fix it. And I'm all for the granulated carbon filters, but 4.1 million an annual at 408. So these were just some things I'm throwing out to chew on. Did we look at any of this when we looked at the $287,000 study to see what we do to fix the problem? I know that we've probably, Stuart, limited the use. I know y'all are pretty careful about summer and hot months, so that's when it's typically worse. Is there anything else we could do there?
Well, luckily, Mark was the one that actually designed our plan. He didn't work for Freezing Nichols at that time, so he'll, he'll be able to talk more about the plant than I can.
Oh, good. You're the perfect one.
So he is, he is the guy to talk about that. But as far as looping the lines, we've looked at doing that, and we've done that throughout our system. There's, just haven't gotten the reduction that we're going to need. When the water leaves the plant, it actually exceeds the allowable amount for the state. So whatever we do in the distribution line, at that, those summer months, it's just, we just can't get there.
Or not affecting it at the plant, is what you're saying?
That's right. We, we've got to go to the heart of the problem. And we looked at those, and we tried to loop lines, we tried to bleed from some pressure planes, higher pressure planes, lower pressure planes, and, and do all the different things. And the states have said, y'all got to do something. And that's the enforcement thing.
Okay, the other thing is, and you're, and I understand, I understand the expediency of what we're trying to do here. But when we do the clarifier, we only have like three of the four, whatever it is, inside there working at, at the current time. Am I correct, at the water treatment plant? So is that, that's going to make some change, correct?
Oh, the sand filters? So we're, the, what we're proposing to do is, at the clarifier right now is, or the clarifier project is a, is the hardware that's inside the tank. The sand filters on the backside of the clarifier aren't in that project. There's one, we're, we're using three of them, but this won't, this is a dissolved, it's in solution, and so filtering it with those kind of methods aren't going to get the, the organic carbon out. Unfortunately.
Well, I know we've battled, been battling it since really 2010, and a lot of it is what's happening upriver, and we can't control that, as you well know, too. You know, DURA is working diligently, but the cause is the high organics coming from upstream and in the, the source of our raw water there. So eventually, there may be a pre-treat that we could do before it, as it comes out. But if you, I'm just throwing everything out I can think about to try to get the highest and best use of our funds here, so.
Well, since we're throwing them all out there, when you mentioned the xenon being an anomaly when it was tested, had the test been not an anomaly, would that have been a viable way to go, or, or not?
Well, it fluctuates, and I'll let Mark talk a little bit about the, about the xenon plants. Like I said, he, he was very instrumental in that. That's actually a little before my time. But it fluctuates so much from, from how much carbon is in the river. So it's hard to tell unless you take it the exact same time. And even if you do that, the displacement in the, in the plant is going to give you different results. And if you allow a few days and you have a rainfall event in there, your carbon can go up. Most of this is decaying plant material that's in, that's in the river. And so you can imagine the river has, has a lot of that. And every time you get a rainfall event, it's going to increase. And as that heat warms up, it acts like a, like a stew almost, cooking it and breaking those particulates down, and that's what's making it into our plant. Can you elaborate more on the?
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think there was, there was a data point that showed, they were taking on a couple of weeks separate from each other, where the conventional plant had a higher THM level and the xenon plant was lower. But the key, I think Stuart's hit on this, is it's, it's dissolved constituents. So the, the main thing that changes how much organics is in the water is the chemical that's added to it, the coagulant. And the same amount of chemicals added to the conventional plant as the xenon membrane plant. It's just the xenon membrane plant's better at taking the particles out, but it doesn't really impact the, that dissolved fraction of it. That's, that's really what gets through and causes the THMs.
Okay.
So last question, Mr. McDaniel. If we do that second option, which is obviously the better option?
Right. Well, the staff is recommending the second option, the, the carbon filters. We'll come back to you with a plan on how we could do that. Today's action to do the refunding was a big step in the right direction. Then tomorrow, meeting with K-Pub to restructure our loan, the ideas that would bring back an approach that would be able to handle this. It's something we have to do, we just don't have a choice. So we're going to try to find a way to do it.
Any other questions or comments? I think we've probably exhausted the subject. Ms. Burton, did you want to speak?
Barbara Burton, 235 Guadalupe Street. I just wanted to say, I think we have more than an economic responsibility here. We've got an environmental responsibility. ASR wells are not just holes in the ground that we dug. We're, we're co-mingling that water with the aquifer water. And we're already putting chlorine in there. And to add chloramines is just not a good idea.
I'm with you 100%. I just want to make sure what we approve is doable.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, council? Anybody have a motion?
I, I move that we instruct staff to pursue the, the carbon fix.
As presented.
Granular activated.
Granular activated carbon.
Activated carbon.
Filters. Filters as a remedy for our TTHM problem.
Second?
We have a motion, we have a second, all in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries five to zero. Good luck, maybe it'll turn out a little better than we think.
Maybe, no. It's going to do that.
Yeah, I mean financially. Okay. Item number seven, items for future agendas. Does any council member have anything that we haven't already discussed or have on a list? Seeing none, then item number 8A and 8B would be slated for executive session. It would be 8A city attorney contract, 8B performance review of city attorney, either or, I'd entertain a motion for executive session.
I'll move we go into executive session.
On both items?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion, do we have a second?
You got a second.
Oh, we've got a second.
I'm sorry, you're right. And 0, 551074. Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Second, all in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries five to zero. So at 7:38 and 35 seconds, we will dismiss into executive session. There was no action taken in executive session. And item number nine would be action on items discussed in executive session, if any.
Mayor, I move that we, I move the adoption of the new contract with Mike Hayes as agreed.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed? Motion carries four to one. No further discussion, we're adjourned at 10:27.